Heavenly Father, we are gathered tonight to thank you for so many things. We're thankful for the rain that we had last night, sunshine that we had, and cool weather that we had, the many blessings that we had within here in Springdale, the opportunity to serve our citizens. And we thank you for this beautiful meeting area, thank you for blessing us with this wonderful city hall, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. In order to be asked, you continue to be with us and bless us, guide us tonight in our decisions in Jesus' name, the Lord.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, I would like to begin to welcome you to tonight's Grayboro City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. We'll call it as ordered, and I will begin by asking our City Mayor to call.
Here.
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 Thank you. We're out of four on our agenda. This is the portion of each agenda that the council meets, the council sets aside for your comments from our citizens. If we have citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, please come up to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and we ask that you keep your comments brief and realize that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, same time, we'll move on. Item five, I'll turn it over to Ernest Fader, see if he can...
Thank you, Mayor, and I have comments I didn't say about the four items I'd like to be first presented in the councilship, which is the way I felt. But the first item, at the Public Vehicle Commission meeting last week, the Public Vehicle Commission forwarded a resolution, which is item number 11, on the agenda for the taxi cab operator permit, and the order is required...
That the council hold a public hearing before action is taken on that resolution, so that's why item five is on the agenda. So is there anyone here that would like to address the council about the request for a new taxi cab operator permit? I do see one person. Come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Stu Larabee Fayetteville Taxi. Ladies and gentlemen, I just became aware of this a few days ago and didn't have time to really put some stuff together. It's rather quick, but there's been a lot of continuing issues with a lot of videos that some of these could not be aired here. I did bring one video that could not, the email system was stripping it off. They have it in the back, and it's safe enough to run, about 45 seconds. And I do have a PDF letter of great concern of what's happened. Hope I can scan through this real quick, but for the new council members over here, there are some problematic issues with Payless Taxi and the experience. I've been around for 13 years approximately, legal in Fayetteville, before Uber ever came in, you know, pretty much the whole history before that of Dynasty, NWA, down under Green Cab, Pinnacle Gyms, and lots of others that have come and go, and the issues and the problems, and a lot of illegal people driving and no commercial insurance. Now, in the past, and this was shown out, Kyle, many times when he was down on Dixon Street, would jump out of his cab to try to fight Dynasty drivers, physically jump out of the cab and fight two different Dynasty drivers and an NWA taxi driver. There have been issues, and those have continued. And before we had the meeting on this before, he was out yelling at me. I don't think any of you may, some of you may have known that happened, but before he made entry into the building, he's out screaming at me in front of the car that I'm from the devil, my father's the devil, blah, 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 and everything else. I am not opposed to someone working and feeding themselves. There needs to be some correction, some guidance, some something, and I'm going to say not yet. And I have somebody else that's here from Fort Smith, Mr. Kyle's biz, what was business partner in Fort Smith that separated and became West Art Taxi. I would wholly support West Art Taxi here in Fayetteville and all of Northwest Arkansas. I am not opposed to competition. I want legal competition, not someone who wants to fight with everybody and all the problematic calls. Now, I only found, really clarified the position with West Art Taxi in the last two months because of all of the complaint calls I would get from Fort Smith. So finally, I called down because I knew it was West Art Taxi down there, and something happened of a split, and find out they got nothing to do with them, and went down and met with them, and see what they're doing, and everything else. And again, I would endorse them. I'm going to ask for a pause on this and a re-review between, they want to submit, and I'll endorse it here, Fayetteville, everywhere up here, and a review between the companies because with Uber and Lyft, you're only going to be able to support so many taxi companies. You can't be a free-for-all, or there's not enough to make it function properly. Now, there are some issues that you don't know about. Mr. Emsole, Kyle was kicked off of the Fayetteville federally funded taxi cab coupon program for some very major incident. Now, both myself and others have tried to call down to Fayetteville to find out why, and the exact word is, they can't say, but it is very bad, we might get sued. So maybe they'll tell somebody here, but they won't tell anybody else why he was kicked off of the taxi cab coupon program down there, and that is something for serious consideration. Now, the video that I got here is one of many typical events. This was during the Garth Brooks concert on Park Down at Walton Arts Center in Fayetteville, and Kyle pulls up, and he's got a carload of people, and he's getting them all to flip me off and starts yelling and screaming. And I was, now my dash cam's pointed forward, but I was able to get my camera up, and it's a 47, 47-second video of him ranting and raving absolutely crazy, going on and on and There's lots of other videos that I would like to call out and have the body, or part of the body, see at some point before it makes a decision, but to do it here, and have to, some of these have to be sanitized. I don't have the time, and I didn't bring them, and with the short notice, I cannot react that fast myself.
Hey, Stu, first of all, let me ask a question of the room. Can y'all hear him all right? The reason I ask, we've got a short little microphone here, and we were curious how that was going to pick up, but I, no, they can hear you, so you're fine. I just wanted to check and see. Secondly, I, I, I hope you're, I, we want to hear what you have to say, but wrap it up. We've got, and honestly, you know, we, we, and Sergeant Bell, I don't know if I'll ask you to come or not, you're welcome to if you need to, but you have, you know, we have a process that vets these, so we're happy to hear what you have to say, but know that we're vetting them too. And if there's ever a problem, there's no problem with us taking away their ability to operate here, and that's the same with you and any other cab company here. So, please be brief in the rest of your remarks, and we're certainly happy to hear with, from the gentleman that you've referenced or anybody else, but save them some time, okay?
There is the incident that Sergeant Bell personally knows about, where I'm driving northbound on College Avenue, and Kyle passes me, holds in front of me, he's jamming on his brakes, keeps jamming on his brakes, trying to cause an accident. Well, this ends, and a minute later Sergeant Bell calls me to let me know. He just got off the phone with him, chewing him out because he had done something in Fayetteville, I'm sorry, in Springdale, and he wouldn't let a woman out of the car until he got a $20 tip for the ride and then claimed he was Fayetteville Taxi. So while the brakes are being jammed on, Sergeant Bell's on the phone, and that's going on, and you know, it's like not letting someone out of a car. I got punching windows, trying to come through into my car, other people calling the cops on him, not even me, when he's trying to attack my car for no reason, okay? And I have the video of all coming up to something. Everything is clean, documented, stuff that is recent of even this week, where he passes me on the freeway, or last week from last, and then starts jamming on his brakes, okay? All this video, all right? You know, hanging out at the gas station, you know, right where I live, and nowhere near it, and last week, driving down the street, acting like he's going to turn into what would be my driveway. Very serious issue. He dissolved Payless Taxi with the falling out with his business partner on May the 23rd, 2013. Now, I had gone down, and I did not, stumbled all, into all this, to get tires as an emergency at Jim Grizzle Tire, and just come, one thing led to another because they thought I was affiliated with him, because he owes them, and that letter's here. Jim Grizzle sent the letter in, tried to fax it in, and they have it in the back, so they should be able to put it on your screen or however that works, that he owes over $7,000. The dates are before the dissolution of the corporation. And so, in order, that's an illegal act, because if you still owe money and you're dissolving the corporation, you're stating you've paid all the taxes, that you, all your bills are clean and everything else, which isn't the case. And that's a very serious issue because they wanted to come up here, but again, no notice. They'd like to get their $7,500, you have a copy of the letter, and these are debts incurred before it was dissolved.
Okay.
That they claimed were sterile, okay? The Arkansas statute requires that the companies have to be...
We, we really don't need, we've got a city attorney, and we've got a, and we've got a sergeant who vets this. I really, I'm, I'm going to call time on you.
All right.
All right? And if there's, and if there's somebody else, you know, the, sir, do you need to come and speak to any of the...
Can I submit this letter for the dissolution?
Do what?
The letter of the dissolution of this corporation.
You can give it to Sergeant Bell, that'll be fine. Thank you. Is there anyone else that needs to speak to this issue? Come up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, my name is Laura Sossman. I'm the attorney for Payless Taxi. I, I'm not going to address all the individual instances. I will say that Payless Taxi operates through a franchise in Van Buren, in Fort Smith, and in Fayetteville. They comply with all of the requirements of those franchises, provide services to those communities, and would do the same thing here in Springdale. Clearly, there are some sort of personal issues perhaps, but I can tell you as the attorney for the company that they are certainly law-abiding, and it's my role to help maintain that, and that's what would happen should they operate here in Springdale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Simplify this, Mayor. Sergeant Bell, do they pass all the regulation ordinance that, that we have in place?
Yes, sir, there will be an inspection process. We've begun part of that, we haven't gotten very far because this needs to happen first, but yes, there is a, an in-depth inspection process. They're going to have to pass all kinds of stuff, we're going to review everything, make sure their insurance is current, they meet all the requirements of the ordinance. I don't know anything about the Fayetteville allegation, I can contact them to find out, but yes, that would be part of...
But that, that's part of what you would do from this point on, should the council approve this tonight, later, later in the meeting? Yes, sir. Come up briefly and...
Payless Taxi LLC was dissolved...
Sir, can you state your name, please, and your address? State your name and your address, please.
My name is Jerry, J-E-R-Y, last name is Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T, West Art Taxi LLC, Fort Smith.
Thank you, Jerry.
The LLC was dissolved, then turned around and recreated. What that does, that creates a new entity for the business, which has to refile as a new taxi company, plus the tax identification number. So my issue is, which is still a legal battle in Fort Smith, we're having to go through the courts over this, with it being create a new identity. I don't know about your guys' ordinance. New identity means they have to refile as a new taxi company through Fayetteville as well, which hasn't been done. So I'm just up here speaking my piece for what I've experienced in Fort Smith, and I just don't see how four cars going to operate your, your citizens, Fayetteville, Van Buren, and Fort Smith effectively.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing on that. We'll take the resolution up as item number 11 on the agenda. The next three items are also public hearings, and I'd like to combine those into one. These, each involve the, two of them involve vacating a portion of utility easement, the third one involves vacating a portion of an alley. The statute requires before action is taken on those that a public hearing be held. City clerk did publish notice of the public hearing is required by the statute, so I'd like to just lump those three together. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on those? Those are items number 15, 16, and 17 on the agenda. If not, I'll close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ernest. We're at item nine, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, to approve them. Minutes is presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item 10, procedural motions, what's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Motion, a second, for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell, Williams, Watson, Overton, Lawson, Bailey, Harriman, Fugiruse, carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item 11, which is what we just had a public hearing on. I'll go ahead and read the resolution, a resolution certifying the need for additional taxi cab service in the city of Springdale, Arkansas pursuant of chapter 122 in the Code of Ordinances for the city of Springdale, Arkansas. I'll ask our city attorney if he's got anything else to add.
No, I think we've pretty much hashed it out between here and the Public Vehicle Commission meeting. I do want to remind the ordinance committee, we're going to be bringing some revisions to the ordinance for, for discussion next week at the ordinance committee meeting regarding our, updating our taxi cab ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there any other questions or comments by the council?
I was just wondering, do Sergeant Bell or anyone else, city attorney's office, mayor's office, anyone, ever look for references on these applications?
The mayor's office doesn't. Sergeant Bell? No. But that's not, that's not a part of our ordinance.
You don't check with other towns when they make reference that they have business in other towns? We don't ever check to see what kind of history they have there?
I, I can't speak for the, for Sergeant Bell, but we do have a list of requirements of the ordinance that they have to meet before the permit will be issued. Even if the resolution passes, they still would have to meet, meet those requirements before the permit would be issued.
So when we check to see if there is a need for additional taxis, what does that entail? Is that, I mean, are we looking at, at how much usage they're getting, and if they're getting too much, we add one, or we just say, hey, this guy needs one?
I don't think, I don't know. We talk about the need, but we're, yeah, mostly our voucher program, if there's, if, if that would be beneficial to our residents. As far as the general business, to me, that's up to the taxi company to determine whether it's feasible for them to do business in Springdale or not. And again, if they don't, if they're not doing business according to, according to the rules, then we can, we can stop them from doing business here.
Is that correct, Ernest? We have that authority to pull a, pull their permit?
All right, any other comments or questions? Anybody in the room? Okay, Denise?
Williams, Watson, Overton, Lawson, Bailey, Harriman, Fugiruse, Powell?
Test it while Patsy's coming up. Okay, they might have been adjusting something. Item 12 is planning commission report and recommendations, and Patsy's at the mic, at the podium, so Patsy, carry on.
The first item is a revision to the planning of development called Brentwood Village. Here's the development plan, the covenants, and the horizontal property. If y'all want me to, I can go through a lot of details, but I can summarize this pretty quickly, okay? What they've done is kind of simplified what we had out there from a six-phase project to a four-phase project. It is 106.7 acres. The original PUD had single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. And what they have simplified it to, there will be single-family homes and townhomes, so there are not any duplexes. If you remember, when we brought this forward the first time, there was a lot of opposition to the duplexes, so those have all gone away, using the same basic standards that we had for the rest of the operation. You know, they can't park on the grass, they have the same standards that we had for that. And the other major change is the townhomes, they have set up a horizontal property regime. So rather than having it operate under the POA that was initially started with this one, they will set up a new master deed, and they will be sold as horizontal property regimes, which sets up an organization that has to take care of all of the green area, all the area around that. So basically, those are the changes. I can go through any kind of detail that you're interested in, if anybody has any other details. We addressed pretty much all the concerns we had when this one first came in, and those were the issues that were still left. And it creates very simple phases, we're not phasing it into little pieces to leave sections of it out so it doesn't connect to other streets like we had before, and the improvements to Hilton Road are, are going through engineering design. We're in the process of acquiring the right of way that we need for the section that's missing, and we'll work into an agreement with the developer to build the road so that it will be available as all these developments move forward. So if anybody has any questions, I can do a lot more detail if you, if anybody's interested.
This, this has had a change in ownership.
Right, had a change in ownership, yes.
And I don't want to go too far afield because I don't think it really has a lot to do with approving these amendments to the PUD, but Ben, Albright, one of the roads we're bringing forward tonight with an, for an engineering contract, is the extension of Albright, which will help access this property, correct?
Right, yes.
So it'll help keep some of that traffic off of Butterfly.
But the previous PUD, they were given the waiver of not having to do street improvements, but they had to dedicate all the right of way.
Right.
So we have the right of way for that, and the subdivision that's coming into the south, we dedicate the rest of the right of way for the portion that they have.
I just wanted to get out in front of any concerns about, about adding more traffic to Butterfly and that discussion.
Those were major concerns that were discussed when we did the PUD originally.
Patsy, you did say there's a subdivision to the south of this, so the south boundary of this is not Fayetteville, is that correct?
Correct. There's another, there's another subdivision to the south of it called Spring Springs, and we'll be seeing that as we move forward.
Springdale goes all the way to Guy Terry, does it, doesn't it?
No, it goes down to...
It doesn't, that's county?
Yeah, there's, there's some pieces that are cut in. It's kind of a really odd area down through there.
I think that, but some of it was in Fayetteville's water service boundary, not in the city limits, though. Okay.
Not part of this, not part of this one.
A part of this one, we're talking about.
Spring Springs, we have to get to that one, get to that part, yes. I didn't read the title. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas on the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from planned unit development, PUD, to planned unit development revised and declaring emergency."
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Say it again.
Watson.
Don't forget to push your button.
Yes, if you have to hear my hope.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
It was spring.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And I want to say thank you to D.R. Horton and their group. They worked really hard of getting all this together and worked with us along. I told them, don't feel slighted that we're not reading the whole thing because it took us a while to get all this stuff together, so they didn't feel slighted that all that work is not in vain, it has to be part of the PUD itself.
Thank you.
The next item is in response to the legislature's Arkansas Data Centers Act of 2023. I think you guys talked about this at ordinance committee, where we created a new use unit for the digital mining, which will become use unit 54, digital asset mining, and it will have its own set of supplementary district regulations for that. It also amends the section of the home office definition for a home office, which allows home office includes digital asset mining is provided in Arkansas Code 141501. And if you want me to go over the details, I can, but it hasn't changed from what you saw at the committee meeting. We had a, a public hearing, there wasn't any comment, and the public hearing, the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Article 5 and Article 6 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and further purposes."
And just to add to what Patsy said, this would, this use unit would be a conditional use in an I-1 and I-2 zone. So you would, you would have to approve anyone that came forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. Council, the, the next item, item 12C, an appeal of the boarding of zoning adjustments, denial of a variance request. I received a request from the attorney for the property owner who has filed this appeal to table this appeal until the next council meeting, which will be September the 26th.
I move item 12C be tabled to the next council meeting.
Okay, motion, a second, to table until the next council meeting. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
I think it takes the second.
I told you I'd do the button, but she took it away from me. Item 13, Finance Committee and Report, Chairwoman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Okay.
Okay. Item A is a resolution to waive the competitive bidding for construction of an airport port hangar, and this is presented by Greg Thomas from Garver. If anybody has, or, not, is Greg? Okay, or Colby can answer any questions that we have. This was forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval. All of these were.
All right. So as you'll recall, in the committee meeting, we talked about three grants that were being given. We batched the vote on these. These are going to be for hangers and improvements to the road, and so we had three grants, and I believe one was for $400,000. I saved my place on the next thing that I'm going to presenting, so I'm going to have to rewind all the way. You may have the amounts there, it's $400,000. I believe one was over $700,000. I believe the grand total is 1.7, 1.5 million. Anyway, we had batched those votes. I don't know if y'all want to batch those tonight and approve all those at the same time, but we can.
City attorney says no.
Sorry.
I move resolution may be adopted.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve, that was 13A. Anyone else need to speak to this? All right, Denise.
Fujirus. Powell. Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 8-0.
All right. Live and learn. Live and learn.
Item 13B is a resolution accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Arkansas State Airport Aid Funds for the Springdale Municipal Airport, and Colby just spoke to that as well.
Move resolution be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson. Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item 13C is a resolution accepting a grant from the Arkansas State Airport Aid Funds for the Springdale Municipal Airport.
Move resolution be adopted. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Okay, item 13D is a resolution accepting a grant from the Arkansas State Airport Aid Funds for the Springdale Municipal Airport, and this is for construction of an access road and utility extensions.
Move resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item 13E is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to construct a box hangar and associated site work.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Denise.
Overton. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Watson.
Carries 8-0.
Item 13F, G, and H are all for parks and rec. Item F is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for artificial turf and to waive a competitive bidding and for other purposes.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
13G is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for enhancements and upgrades to recreational fields, to waive competitive bidding, and for other purposes.
Move the resolution pass.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. Colby, for folks watching that weren't at the committee meeting, give us a quick, just a quick...
Now, this one I can talk about, there's actually no one talking about here. As y'all are aware, we hired a procurement consultant to help negotiate this deal for us. We have two different contracts. One is for the turf, and one is for the alternate upgrades that we did to each field. We originally went into this project, I think we were going to spend about $6.5 million. Ends up, we're going to spend about $4.6 million on the project. So we were able to save substantial amount of money by negotiating through a new process that we have. The next resolution we're voting on is to enter into that same process as well through a procurement consultant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item 13H is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement to procure a contract for LED sports facilities, lighting, and installation, and for other purposes.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. Anyone? Roll call, please.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell. Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson. Bailey.
Carries 8-0.
Hey, what's the timeline of this construction going to be getting started, Colby?
We're going to be sending out the notice to proceed tomorrow morning.
I think the deadline, when, when they said they could have it done is when?
In February. We want to make sure we have it ready by spring ball.
For folks watching at home, I think that's 14 fields, softball, baseball, and soccer, various, in various parks. Hey, Ryan.
Good evening.
I believe that the rest of the items, with the exception of T, are dealing with engineering services for roads. Item I is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the City of Springdale 2023 Street Overlay Project. Ryan Carr is here to visit with us about these.
Just to summarize, this is the approval of the $1.97 million contract with APAC for the 2023 overlay project.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Ryan, do we have a, a map of what these are that our residents can go to and see?
Yes, we can have that uploaded to our website.
Great, thank you.
We'll do that tomorrow.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 8-0.
Item J is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for the extension of Sunset Avenue and improvements to Powell Street. Project number 23PBS6, presented by Ben Peter.
This, this is the first of many contracts we're going to go over tonight. This one is for Garver Engineering to do Sunset Avenue from just west of Freezing Store to Powell Street, and then down Powell Street to just south of Highway 412. And most of the engineering firms are represented here, so if you have any detailed questions, we're happy to answer those.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for, to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments?
And again, these are just the design of these projects. These monies are for the designs.
This, this should take us through bidding services for each of these projects. So it's from the beginning of design through bidding services.
Okay, bidding, design, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Roll call.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item K is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for the extension of County Line Road, project number 23PBS7.
This is to build County Line Road from Lowell Road West to about a half mile west of Highway 71, with an extension of the trail down to tie to the Greenway, existing Greenway Trail. And this is with Crafton Toll &amp; Associates.
This is part of our really necessary east-west connections. This is the first part of that connection.
This, this is a part of the next northern corridor that will go east and west across the city, yes.
All right. Other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes. Carries 8-0.
Item L is a resolution authorizing the extension of an engineering services contract for the north side intersection improvements, project number 23PBS8.
Okay, this contract is with Jacobs Engineering, and this is to do improvements to Huntsville at Thompson, Bacchus at Thompson, Elm Springs Road at Fortieth Street, and Pleasant and Sunset.
Move the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Other questions? Anyone? Roll call.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item M is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for the south side intersection improvements, project number 23PBS9.
Okay, this contract's with Burns &amp; McDonald, and this is for the southern intersections, which include Don Tyson and Thompson Street, Robinson Avenue and Thompson Street, Don Tyson and Old Missouri Road, and Don Tyson and the I-49 southbound interchange. I-49 and Don Tyson Parkway, the southbound. So if you're northbound, it's, it's a signalized intersection. If you're southbound, you come off and you end up at Don Tyson, there's no signal there. So this would be to signalize that interchange.
We've got a lot of concerns and complaints about...
There's a lot more traffic, and that was built, there was nothing left.
So that's the intersection that I've complained about for a long time, not being lit very well. The lighting was not very well.
That's that intersection.
Will there be lighting considered?
There'll be lighting with the streetlights, yes.
Okay.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments?
On these intersection improvements, is it, it's not only just for vehicular travel, is it also for sidewalks and crosswalks and all that in there also?
Well, the one previous at Pleasant and 412 is almost exclusively for pedestrians. This will improve some pedestrians, but is primarily for traffic congestion. So if the signal gets replaced, we'll include pedestrian facilities with it. If it's just adding a right turn lane and nothing needs to happen to the signals, then no.
Any other questions or comments?
For, for dwelling on that Don Tyson, I-49, but is, we're looking at that because, I mean, that's not that old, is it? We're looking at it because there's been traffic accidents there, or what, what has brought our attention to that intersection?
So when that was built, that Don Tyson didn't extend to the west, and Gene George was not much of a road. So now, Gene George extends all the way to Elm Springs Road, and there's a lot more traffic. Arkansas Children's Hospital's now there, Highlands Oncology is now there, and so we're seeing a lot more left turns there. When we first built the thing, everybody was coming to town, so they were coming east. Now they're starting to go west. Traffic volumes have increased to the point where it, it needs some, some help.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Item N...
I should add to that, that, you know, we're extending Don Tyson to the west to go to 112, so we anticipate even more traffic through that intersection. Go ahead.
Item N is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for improvements to Shiloh Street, project number 23PBS10.
This is a contract with CEI Engineering, and this is to do a improvement to Shiloh Street from Huntsville Avenue south to Maple Avenue, primarily to add pedestrian facilities and landscaping and LID implementation with tree, tree wells and those sorts of things.
Any chance of eliminating that light at Shiloh and Huntsville?
Eliminating the light at Shiloh and Huntsville? I think we plan, from the downtown master plan, for that to be one of the primary entrances to downtown, so probably not.
Thank you. Yeah, the consultant said we needed there when there weren't three people going through that intersection, however many years ago.
You'd really like it if you're on Shiloh, though.
Stop signs work well, too.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Are y'all hearing Denise in this handheld? You're not? Yeah, it works well.
To be honest, I'm kind of having trouble hearing everybody.
I'm not sure everybody's getting, we go pretty fast on the vote, so...
Item O is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for Springdale Street Reconstructions, project number 23PBS11.
This is a contract with McLellan Consulting Engineers. This is to do 12 street reconstructions. These are the streets that were listed on the study that was done five years ago, as being beyond the overlay point, and they need some great improvements. I can, I'm happy to list those, but they're, they're second on the resolution if you want to read those.
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Roll call.
Bailey. Harriman. Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Carries 8-0.
Item P is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for Albright Road extensions, extension, project number two three PBS twelve.
So this contract is with Half Engineering Incorporated. This is for Albright Road that we referred to a little earlier this evening that will get us from Hilton Road West to Butterfield Coke Road.
Motion, second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments from anyone in the room? Roll call.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Carries eight zero.
Item Q is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for Dick Smith Street Extension, project number two three PBS thirteen.
Okay, this contract is with Engineering Services Incorporated. This is, project is to extend Dick Smith Street north to intersect with Ford Avenue.
Move the resolution pass.
Okay, motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room?
Um, what's that doing to the trail there?
Dean's Trail will intersect with the new road, cross the new road with a pedestrian crossing, and then stay on the west side of Dick Smith Street. Well, it's, it was. The east side was, it's not totally abandoned. The white stripe is still there, but the east side is not really the trail because the neighborhood wanted to park there. And so the trail is on the west side. You can use it, but there's going to be a car parked in your way, most likely. But it is safe to use.
It's supposed to be both directions.
Correct.
And so we'll be crossing Dick Smith with this extension. The trail will be crossing Dick Smith.
Yes.
Will there be any kind of protection there?
I don't think it will need protection, but that's something we'll look at while we're going through design. I just don't think the volume of traffic will need its own signal other than crosswalk signs, probably.
Any other questions or comments? Kay Denise.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Item R is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for East Emma Streetscape, project number two three PBS fourteen.
This contract is with CEI Engineering, and this is to do the east part of Emma Avenue from Park Street to Highway two sixty-five. It'll be, everything will be within the existing right-of-way, and it'll be converting this into more pedestrian-friendly facilities.
Is this gonna look similar to what West Emma looks like, or?
It probably won't be quite that slimmed down, but it will be two lanes rather than the four lanes that it is until you get to the signal, and then it'll widen out so you have turn lanes. But yes, it will shrink, add parking probably to both sides, because Senior Center, the Jones Center's right there, so we'll utilize the right-of-way that we have. From Park Street to Highway two sixty-five.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion, a second to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Come up here, please, Mike.
Thank you, and nice digs. My first que, oh, Mike Gilbert, two eleven West Maple Avenue. My first question, I guess, would be for Ben. Does this include the power along Park Street from Emma to the creek?
Yes. The scope of this project includes taking the overhead utilities underground, and it's from Highway two sixty-five to Park Street, and then down Park Street to Spring Creek. Of course, when we get a price, we'll decide just how much of that we can do, but it does, it is included in the scope of this project.
Oh, which is why I'm here. So that, the power lines between Emma Avenue and the creek are really significant for a number of reasons. There's currently planned and close to being permitted thirty-five million dollars worth of work on both sides of the intersection there. One's a mixed-use project, one is, I believe, seventy-seven additional housing units. There is another seventy units that's in, on the drawing board for the other end of Park Street, which is another ten million dollars in improvements. And then you're going to build a new senior center here pretty quickly, and then that property is going to be redeveloped. So there's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five million dollars going to be invested in that corridor in the next couple of years. And currently, the proximity to the power lines is impacting one of those projects, and is going to cause a little bit of a delay until it gets worked out. The solution's going to be one of two things. Wait on it, try to expedite it, or reduce the size, because we did a great job with form-based code, which has been a catalyzer for a lot of these improvements in downtown. Part of that is the build-to concept that Pat's leadership on has driven a lot of impact, and that's the situation that we, that we're encountering on that project there. And so the last review last week with, with the power company was we've got to do something to shift the project, and that's going to involve an impact in the number of rental units, and then the pro forma on the project and the whole nine yards. So, so it's kind of important of all of the, I know they're all important, but that one, that one is a domino that impacts a whole lot of things that are really, really impactful for downtown. And I know you're only voting on, right now, you're only voting on design contracts, and as you clearly stated, you've got to appropriate the funds for it, but I would submit to you that those funds probably provide for you the highest return on investment in the city. Thank you.
So in our design, we're pulling more wires, but pretty much is what he's talking about. We need more capacity.
You bury them. Take everything that's overhead and put it underground. Those are all, of course, owned by private utilities, so all we'll be doing is facilitating by getting an easement so that they have a place to go, and then paying them to relocate them if, if they have an easement of their own.
If you, if you haven't done it, if you drive down Park where the new apartments have been built on the east side, you can get a real good visual about what Mike and Ben are talking about and the need to get those utilities underground.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not referring to capacity at all. The capacity is there for those developments, but I would suggest, one of the developers who's made a significant investment on Park Street had to pull balconies off of his townhome project because of the proximity of the power lines. And even though he pulled those off, if you are looking to move right across the street from our beautiful amenity that we're investing in downtown, and you're in that upstairs bedroom, you look out that bedroom at the sagging power lines. And so the, the component of that is the impact on overhead power lines on residential developments. In the case of, I think you've seen the big Emma renderings, there's these great big beautiful balconies that overlook the park. They're coming off. That changes the rentability. It changes the impact of the whole deal. So your choice is you either pull those off or you reduce your number of units and then pull it back away from the street. And when you pull it back away from the street, you have just counteracted a lot of the work that was done years and years ago to facilitate development with form-based code. So they kind of all go together, just like street lighting does. If you want a real walkable downtown, you've got to make people comfortable when they're leaving their home and walking to Emma Avenue. So it all ties together, but started with the master plan, followed up by form-based code, and that's what resulted in all this development growth that we have. And I don't know how many permits have been issued in downtown. Mike Shemley, probably a hundred million or so. So it's working.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Item S is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for Meadow Avenue Safe Street Improvements, project number two three BPS fifteen.
Yep, this, this contract is with McClellan Consulting Engineer, and it is Meadow Avenue from Highway seventy-one to the Greenway. Well, I said, it, it does go to commercial. It's that far away.
Second.
Creates a lot of parking.
Do.
For downtown. That's a, this will really be a good, one of those bang-for-your-buck projects. We got a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Kay Denise, roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The final item is item T, a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for Smart School Connections, project number two three BPS sixteen.
This one is with CEI Engineering. This is the, the one bond project that is more of a project of opportunity. We're going to start with the elementary schools and try and work on walkability to get from residences to the schools, and any place that we can find small segments of sidewalk or on-street facilities, anything that would help that, those students get to school safely, is what this is about.
Ben, I have a question on those lines. This, the street improvements there on, is it Julio Road? Page four fifty-eight of our packet. And will the sidewalks be included along those, when the improvements to the road are made, will sidewalks be included along that side of, I think it's George Elementary? Or I don't know what, what, what school that is. What is that?
I think it's Lakeside, is it not?
Yeah, it's on the corner here of Julio and Hilton.
So the answer is that it is not in the scope, the design scope that we've talked about, because that's a street reconstruction, is the entirety of the scope that handles Julio Road. So that's to rebuild Julio Road to make it a good, safe, drivable road. The Smart Schools might be a place where we put sidewalk along the north side of Julio Road to get people from the neighborhoods to Lakeside.
Thank you.
Move the resolution be adopted.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Kay Denise.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item fourteen, Technology Committee Chairman Randy, Randall, Randy Harriman, Randall Harriman, Randall.
I'll answer to Randy, that's fine. Uh, we have a resolution to appropriate funds for tax notification program for the Springdale District Court to be paid from the Court Automation Fund forwarded with, from committee with recommendation for approval. This will be presented by Ernest Cate.
This, this, as we said at committee, this implements a tax notification program to help reduce the number of failure to appear in Springdale District Court. It's shown to be very successful in Rogers.
Is a court representative here?
I move that resolution be adopted.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve. It's okay. Dougie will take it. All right, we do have a motion, a second. Any further comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Carries eight zero.
Yeah, I think the rest of the agenda is to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you. The first one is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utilities located on property in Springdale Benton County, Arkansas, declaring emergency for other purposes. This is on property located at seventy-nine eighty-six Long Spur Avenue. This abandons a portion of the utilities, and they've, property owners obtained all the consents from the utility companies that are involved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone in the room need to speak to this issue? All right, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. The next item is an ordinance vacating a portion of the Platted Alley in Block eighteen Railroad, addition to the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen three oh one, three oh one at sec, declaring emergency for other purposes. The portion of the alley to be vacated is in your packet. The western half of that alley was actually vacated years ago, and this would vacate the eastern portion of the alley. And as a, as the previous item, the adjacent property owners have given their consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton. Lawson. Bailey.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. Next item is an ordinance vacating portions of utilities on Washington County Tax Parcel Number eight one five two eight one two eight zero one zero pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen three oh one, three oh one, declaring emergency for other purposes. This is basically relocating some utilitiesments on Springdale High School property. The diagrams are in your packet.
Ordinance pass.
Motion, a second to approve. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Williams. Watson. Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. There's light at the end of the tunnel. There's two more items. Next item is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to buy cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency, property located at two two three four Carefree Lane.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise.
Watson. Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Powell. Williams. Watson.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. Next item is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utilitiesment in the city of Springdale Benton County, Arkansas. This is at four oh four two Salisbury Street. This would set the public hearing for October tenth, and the city clerk would publish notice as required by statute.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. Other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item twenty, discussion concerning our, the date of our next committee meeting next week. We've tentatively suggested next Wednesday, about half the council, well exactly half the council, will be in DC through Tuesday night. So is that your, does that sound like a plan to everybody? Okay. All right, we'll, that's what we'll go with then. Next Wednesday, we'll be committee, your, I think the packet, Anna, the same deadlines on the packet and everything we had before, so as normal. Comments from council? Comments from council?
Mayor, I'm feeling a little melancholy and a whole lot old. This is my third city council room and the third mayor, and it's going to be my last.
Thank goodness.
Well, and the first one was, was new, wasn't it? It's close. All right. City attorney, you got anything?
No, sir.
I, I don't have anything. I want to thank Mark and his team for their hard work over the next, last three weeks getting this room ready. We've still got a few bugs to work out, and they're working tonight, but we needed to get this behind us, and I think it worked pretty well. The voting's a little tough. I think Denise goes too fast, but when we get the electronic voting in, that won't matter. So, so anyway. Well, she did. She did, that's true. I don't have anything else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.